Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 11th, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Onto the agenda. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All of them favors?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next is approval of the minutes from the May 14th, 2012 meeting. Are there any changes that anyone saw that needs to be made to those minutes? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Heard a second. All of them favor? Aye?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
I've got an abstention.
Abstention.
All right. Moving on to the first public hearing this evening is Master Technology Group Incorporated. It's a request for a planned unit development concept review on 2.93 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.93 acres, a zoning district change for an I-2 to office on 1.25 acres, and a site plan review on 2.95 acres. Mr. Franson, I understand the applicant is requesting a continuance to the July 9th meeting?
That's correct. There's a letter in your packet referring to the change and the continuance of the public hearing. They're trying to work out the terms of the agreement for the use of the parking on the adjacent parcel. That's kind of the sticking point. And once they get that resolved, and hopefully that'll be in time for the next Planning Commission meeting on July 9th.
This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the audience that would like to come up and speak regarding this proposal? Any questions from the commissioners or straightforward? Say entertain a motion for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend a continuance to the July 9th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Having heard a second, all of them favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And I would like to advise the audience that the new public hearing notices will not be mailed out for that project. Next public hearing we have is the Woods at Bryant Lake by Landmark Development. Request for a planned unit development concept review on 6.95 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 6.95 acres, a zoning district change from rural to R-1-22 on 6.95 acres, and a preliminary plat of 6.95 acres into five lots. Mr. Franson, I understand this one also is looking to request a continuance.
That is correct. You have a letter in your packet. Actually, it's an email from Landmark Development requesting the continuance. They need a little bit more time to work out the solution through sanitary sewer. There are several options that they're looking at. And hopefully, by the time we return on July 9th, we'll have a plan that will be acceptable to our engineering division, and we can proceed on with that public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franson. As this is a public hearing, are there any members of the audience who would like to speak to this proposal? Seeing none, commission members, any questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend a continuance to the July 9th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Heard a second. All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next public hearing moving right along is the High Point at Riley Creek. This is a zoning district change from rural to R-1-13.5 on 5.0 acres and a preliminary plat on 5.0 acres into 12 lots. I understand the project proponent is here today. I would ask the proponent to come up and provide a brief presentation or... Or just... Do I understand they're looking for a continuance on this one as well? Or not?
I guess we're expecting them to make a short presentation so you can have a little bit of a discussion about whether or not you think it's appropriate for single family.
Right.
And then after that discussion, then we should have an action to continue discussion to the next meeting until we have the details of the stormwater worked out.
The project proponent will step up and please state your name and spell your last name for city record.
Hello, Board. My name is Scott Carleston, 8150 Drexel Court here in Eden Prairie. I am part of the development group with this parcel. We've been working with staff, and we'll take the recommendations from the board as well as the staff this evening and follow the lead if they feel that we do need more time. It's a pretty straightforward development, just two parcels of land right next to one another. And really, we're just going to be bringing single-family homes. And the issues that need to be addressed is the stormwater ponding until they do the improvements on Conner Road 4 down there south of Grace Church to connect to that point. Right now, the drainage, the flow of drainage, well, and I got Nate here with Cedar Berquist to verify, but right now it just sheet drains over the entire area onto the MAC property. What we've talked about with staff, and that is to run some temporary storm pipe down there through the easement, daylight it out until we get the improvements done, if I'm understanding correctly, on Conner Road 4. So I think it's an issue where we're in front of MAC, and I'll let Mr. Bona with the next development speak to it since she's been the one that's been meeting with MAC. We worked out an agreement with MAC to use the temporary road to keep traffic off of the roadways to bring dirt in that we're going to be bringing across the street from the toll site. And that's really all there is to it, is really the storm ponding is really the issue, that we're willing to work with staff and whatever the recommendation is. The only thing I would like to ask is just whether we move it on to the next meeting or not. But whatever we do as far as the temporary pipe or permanent pipe, it would be nice to do something one, if possible, do one time, to save on costs, if that's at all possible. I know, Rod, that we have to, don't know heights and adjustments and where the pipe's going to go for sure, but anything we can do and work with staff, we're happy to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Carleston. Mr. Franson, you want to go over the staff report quick?
May well. Mr. Chairman, this is a subdivision of five acres into 12 lots, and all of the lots conformed with the requirements of the R-1-13.5 zoning district. It also has the density that conforms with the comprehensive plans. As far as the use of the property and zoning, this would be the correct thing to do. The only thing that's really left to work out in addition to some other engineering details, you have an exhibit that's in your packet that's prepared by Carlson McCain, and it talks about this temporary stormwater pipe which conveys the water from the pond, which is a joint pond shared by High Point and the Meadows, conveys that down to Eden Prairie Road. And so the staff recommendation is to a continuance to the June 25th Planning Commission meeting, which would allow time for staff to review the revised engineering drawings and to coordinate that with the Metropolitan Airports Commission. And we expect to come back to the commission on the 25th with the recommendation for approval at that time.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Franson. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project proponent? Jerry?
I actually have one for staff. This project and the neighboring project, when the neighboring project first came to us back a couple of months ago, there was a discussion about the need to add a secondary road for egress from that area. Right now, everything has to go out through Beverly Lane, is it, or Beverly Drive? And it went from this second proposal here tonight to the east down to Eden Prairie Road. Now, as we're adding more homes all the time here, between these two projects, we're going to have 35 homes. And if you look at all the other owners along Beverly Drive, we're going to have potentially another 12 homes for every large lot that there is there now. You know, it just really points to the need to have a comprehensive approach to the transportation plan in that area. But one alternative that we might want to consider is rather than having a secondary road for egress, the big concern is always fire access and responding to fires. If you were to have the new homes be sprinkled, you greatly decrease the need for secondary egress. And, you know, there's a cost associated with sprinkling the homes, but there's a huge cost associated with putting another road in. And the opportunity to put another road in could be really difficult because of the MAC property. And when we were talking about going across MAC property before with a permanent road, the response that I believe the city got was absolutely no. And the other side benefit that there is, is if you sprinkler houses, you get like a 10% or 20% reduction in your homeowner's insurance throughout the life of the house. So it can be a significant positive as an alternative to just building more roads. So just something I wanted to offer to you to please take into consideration, because it isn't something that's easy to add on later on. But if we make that kind of decision now and move forward with all these developments in that fashion, it might be a real positive for everyone. That's it.
Any other questions? Travis?
Kind of dovetailing off of that, what was the latest legislature on this last session on sprinkler systems? Was it commercial only or was that residentially based?
I think that was residential, and I think that didn't pass.
Okay.
It was a hell of a effort. But I think, you know, there's significant trade-offs here where it could be something that could be a real positive by eliminating the need for another road. And so if you look at it from that perspective, worth evaluating.
I think it's a really good comment to add in, Jerry. I think, you know, there's, I think, some other things to think of, too. I mean, it's going to be a high-density area in the future someday. So that whole infrastructure needs to be reworked to a certain degree. And obviously, you know, putting the onus on the homeowners, if you will, to have their homes with sprinkler systems, you know, some might not necessarily agree with that. But, you know, there's also other safety concerns, too, obviously police and emergency vehicles such as ambulances, too. But it's a good idea, Jerry.
I would also agree with Commissioner Pitrick's statements as well, and it's something that should definitely be looked at in the future. Just a quick question for the project proponent. Does a continuance harm your project schedule in any fashion?
Thanks for asking. And to be honest with you, I don't think one continuance would be a problem. I'm not here to speak for the folks behind me and their next project, to slow them down, but I have no problems at all working out with staff. Indeed, that's what everybody recommends.
Mr. Chairman, the next city council meetings in the middle of July, there's just one council meeting that month. I don't remember if it's the 17th or the 19th. So if they came back on the 25th or came back on the 9th, they could still be on the same council meeting.
Either one will work out. That's okay. Sounds good. Just a quick question for Mr. Carleston here. I had a question regarding the temporary versus the permanent piping as a remedial solution. Is permanent piping an option here?
Yeah, it's an option. The reason we suggested a temporary solution is that all best plans to try to make it permanent without a design and a profile and what the needs are, capacity needs of that area. It would be an educated guess at best, I guess, to get something in there. I did talk to MAC today, and they're not real friendly with, or not really agreeable to a temporary solution. They'd probably rather see a permanent solution, too. So I think it's something that can be worked on. We're acceptable to it if they can agree to something that would work with no guarantees that it's going to, that there won't be some, something that would have to be replaced if they don't presume the development the way it would be once it gets approved. So they're going to have to go through some type of fairly detailed design.
Right. But just as long as it's a possibility, that's good news.
May I comment on that? The reason where that was coming from really was, what I just didn't want to do is we put a good amount of money into a pipe temporarily that we end up taking under a short period of time. But obviously, we'll do whatever makes sense, rod, we're fine. The other thing, you don't want to spend money for permanent pipe and then end up having to rip it out. I completely understand.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the project proponent? Travis?
Continuing on the piping, when is the proposed improvements for Eden Prairie Road? I think Toll has started to move earth or started to do various things up in the Phase B. When are they projected to be at that point where the crossing of the MAC road into Eden Prairie Road would be? Because I know that on the Street Department, we're down there about three times a year improving that from stormwater drainage issues. And a permanent would make better sense, especially since there's a large property owner that's doing improvements in the area right now.
Well, Toll Brothers has started, or will be starting their grading operations, I think, next week, I believe. And they'll be doing a lot of onsite grading to do a lot of their work and probably some hauling on Eden Prairie Road as well. The permanent solution that we're talking about here, or temporary, is really along the MAC road. It would certainly be a temporary solution along Eden Prairie Road. If you look at the exhibit, there's a short section of pipe that's on that parallels Eden Prairie Road. That would certainly be temporary because we're going to have to rebuild and connect up that pipe coming down the MAC road into Eden Prairie Road storm sewer. So in either case, the Eden Prairie Road will be temporary, whatever solution is there. But the part on serious way, it's possible it can be temporary or permanent. But we'll have to, that's where we'll have to have a discussion with MAC and the developers in the next two weeks to see if there's a possibility to do something.
Any other questions? Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Carleston.
Thank you very much.
As this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and say a few words? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend a continuance to the June 25th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Second.
Heard a second. All of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And again, I'd like to advise that new meeting notices will not be sent out for that project as well. Next public hearing is the Meadows at Riley Creek, 2012, Remfer slash Driver. It's a request for a zoning district change from rural to R-1-13.5 on 10.11 acres and a preliminary plat of 10.11 acres into 23 lots, one outlot and road right of way. If the project proponent would please step forward and say a few words about the project. Again, please just say your name and spell your last name for city record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Steve Bona, B-O-N-A. I'm with Homestead Partners and Marsh Cove LLC. And we're back with another shot at reworking part of our property that we're presenting tonight. We've been through this a couple of times, but the good news is each time we keep, each time we come back, it's better. I can confirm that. This project originally had some access issues and were not the Vern Remfer property to the south. We came in with a loan, and it was a 12-lot site. And since then, there's been a road arrangement agreement worked out with the property owners to the north, the Smith Parcel and the Driver Parcel. And we've combined the Driver Parcel with the Remfer property to, for a total of 23 lots. So we've reworked the property. They work much better together for various reasons, topography and drainage being the two big ones. And so now, we've kind of gone through that process, and we appreciate the help from staff and the city attorney to do that. And basically, the two points that we're working on now have just been discussed. The one was hauling material from the Toll property to our, to these properties, these three, because significant material is needed for them. And so we're working with staff and the development group to make that happen. And then the stormwater pipe, which we just discussed a little bit. Carlson McCain, the pond was designed by, as a part of our plat, and Carlson has done all the engineering on that pond and the pipe, so we've been working on that for quite a while. I have been in discussions with MAC about the stormpipe. As of now, we truly believe that a temporary pipe is by far the best solution because we don't believe that a permanent pipe can be calculated for elevations, for capacity, for the MAC road would have to be torn up in order to put a permanent pipe in. And we're talking about fairly small development parcels that are going in to support the cost for that. So we'll work with staff and with MAC over the next week or so and try to come up with a good solution, final solution to that. But again, I think that the temporary pipe would be designed where you see it on the south side of the MAC road. We can easily trench in that pipe on the side of the road, I believe, four to six feet deep or so, somewhere in that neighborhood. So it's not, it's certainly not a big project. And then if the MAC property does develop at some point in the future, there's no guarantees on that, this pipe could be there a very long time, or it could be removed at that time. But as I said, we'll certainly have that discussion. We'll keep working with staff and with MAC to try to complete that and come up with the best solution. So, and we can, the schedule sounds like the continuance will work with us. We are in a tight timeframe, so we definitely need to be approved at the next Planning Commission meeting. And this timeframe is based on the material that Toll has on their property and to bring it over to our sites. We just have to be ready when they're ready. And that July meeting, for city council approval, now we're getting to the point where everything has to work perfectly. So this will be the one continuance that we can afford.
Okay.
So any questions at all?
I will get back to Mr. Bona there.
Okay.
Already here from the commission members. First, Mr. Franson, if you could take us through the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a subdivision of 10 acres into 23 lots, conforms with the requirements, the R-1-13.5 zoning district conforms to the density that we have in our comp plan of up to two and a half units per acre. The recommendation on this project is identical to the one we had in the last project, has come back in a couple of weeks, have the stormwater piping solution worked out. We should be in a position for a staff recommendation for approval on the 25th.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff or the project proponents? I understand the proponents find it just one continuance, so it sounds fairly straightforward. That being said, this is a public hearing. If there are any members in the audience that would like to speak to this project, please step forward now. Seeing none, I will welcome a motion for a continuance.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend a continuance to the June 25th, 2012 meeting.
Second.
Having heard a second, all of them favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Final public hearing of the evening. Oh, previous projects, again, let the audience, there will be no public hearings, or public notices sent out for that project. So final public hearing tonight is the Mitchell Crossing Apartments 2012 by Eden Prairie Development. It's a request for a public, sorry, planned unit development concept review on 3.098 acres, a planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.098 acres, a zoning district change from community commercials to RM-2.5 on 3.098 acres, and a site plan review on 3.098 acres as well. If the project proponent would please step forward and say a few words about the project.
Hello again.
My name is Scott Carleston, 8150 Drexel Court, Eden Prairie.
You're like a pro.
Because I'm nervous and scared standing up here, are you okay if I sit down and go through the slide presentation?
Certainly, absolutely.
Is there anything you want to do? Start, Mike, or?
No.
Okay.
It's your nickel at this time.
Point the mic. Is the light on over there? How's the mic working over there?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's better, right there.
Thanks, thanks. I'll go through this presentation fairly quick with you. I'm not going to bore you, and I know you want to get out, and it's a quick night so far. Mike said I got three slides, but I'm going to take a little bit more than three slides. So anyway, just get back to, I've been a resident here for 20 years. I've got five kids, done a lot of development here in Eden Prairie with the Stonegate, the Heritage, Pines 1, Pines 2. Area resident, love the community, and that's why I'm here. The parcel that I'm referring to right now, as you can see, is actually, the blue is the main parcel, which we sit right next to Buca. It's between Buca and the BP. There's also a couple stars in the back there that, I see it's gotten shifted a little bit, but there's actually three parcels of land here. It's not just the one with the blue around it. It actually is at 7687, and then the one in that upper right in the back. So here's the location of it. It's a real kind of an orphaned piece of land. It's sat there for a lot of time. A lot of people try to do different things with it. The Buca there is right off the off-ramp. Right next to it is the BP station, which I met with the owner, and she was very, very excited to hopefully have a neighbor and some more business. This is what I'm proposing to build. And if you'll notice, if there are any questions tonight, first of all, Mr. Mohagen, who designed it, is here. And this is what we are proposing. If you can see in that, right above that decking on the left there, above the main entrance, that will be facing Buca, just to kind of get your bearings straight. And then the stuff to the back right is the stuff overlooking the wetlands. And I just want to kind of buzz through to give you a concept of what we're planning to do. It's a little bit different tonight because this piece, we are asking for three waivers of real importance here. One is a density, and I'll explain why. And also, we're asking for the parking because, and I'll get more into that as we go through. I think Eden Prairie is ready for a new apartment. We have not had one here since 2004 with the bluffs. There is a new norm in the construction, and I have a gentleman who just came in here with Weiss, who is part of our team to put this project together. And if you'll notice in the staff report, Mr. Franson had mentioned that after my submittal of May 4th, we came back and brought some more documentation in here last Friday because a couple of things had changed because we were not meeting the parking requirements. There is an explanation for that, and that is, is when I met with my, our business partner in the construction end of it, the building was way upside down with parking being too big. We've done two things that we really believe in now, and we talked about times have changed. And I got Barb here, she's with Stephen Scott Management, and we'll get into that a little bit later, too. So here's Buca. Here's where we are. And what I really want to talk about is, we're asking for three waivers from the city, but we're not asking for any money from the city. We want to move as quick as we possibly can. It's a $35 million project. Time is of the essence in our minds. We want to lock into interest rates so the performance can work. But the way it's set up now today is we really believe that we need to get a new concept with the Millennium kids who are in their mid-20s and can afford to move out. So what we're doing is smaller units, like 600, 650 square feet, that are studios that gives them their flat-screen TV and a futon bed, what they're looking for today. We don't need the big rooms for the big TVs anymore. So with Barb's help, that's what we came up with, and that's the direction we're going. So Mike is correct in the staff report, is that we, Mr. Franson, I'm sorry, Mike.
Either way, it works.
All right, thanks. So really, what happens is the units have shrunk, which then increases the units. Well, if you add more units, and we have to add two parking stalls per unit, now the parking gets upside down. So after talking with Rick Fenske here with Weiss Construction, the performer went out of whack. We got back together after May 4th, and that is why you're seeing there is an unusual, but that's why things did change from our original application. This area, getting back to it, is the future light rail, obviously, Southwest Station, and you can see where we're located in there. People are going to be able to walk right across the street. People are going to be able to walk right across the street and jump on whether it be like, if the train stays here in the future. If not, Southwest Station's obviously been very successful. There we are, again, walking to the LRT, the Southwest Station, hopefully our future transit. So here we are, a $35 million project. We believe it's going to be a great positive impact on the economy. It's going to add jobs, it's going to help the residents, we're going to bring some tax dollars back into the schools, and hopefully get some good press in the schools again. Three reasons for the PUDs, and that is, is we really, in talking to Mr. Fenske, we've talked about, we really need to get this thing up, get it going and moving as quick as we can, because it's going to take us 12 to 15 months to build. We want to get in the ground this year, we want to get it going, because we're still talking another year out before we're actually locked in if something's going. Here's where, I hope I can spell it out a little bit better. The 257 stalls is more of a normal we're finding today. It's actually, this inner-city apartments, inner ring, are one per unit. Now, a lot of them are going one per bedroom. One per bedroom takes us to 257 stalls. And at $15,000 a stall is what they cost to build, you can see that we're talking, it's about $3.8 million just for the parking right now. When you go to the outdoor ring, the second tiers, what happens is, you go to two stalls, which is 376 of them, your rents go down to $1.54, and your parking rates go up to $5.6 million. So I, not that I need to beat the financing to death, but I do want you to understand that there is some rhyme and reason to what we are talking about today. Meeting the setback requirements is something that I, I feel that we're not infringing upon anybody. We've talked to the neighbors. There was no one in front of us, behind us, next to us. And again, by being able to infringe into our setback requirements, gives us the ability to do more of those studio apartments, which makes the building more feasible. We think there's a real need for that renter today. Again, this just gets back to, we feel that it's a great location for the mass transit right across the way. If I could now, I'd like to have Barb come on up, if you wouldn't mind, Barb. And, yeah, do you mind? What I did is that I went and hired what I thought would be the best, the experts in this industry. So what I did when I first wanted to build an apartment here, I went to the Ellipse, and I don't know how many are familiar with that. It's the one that was built on the old Al's Bar on France and Excelsior Boulevard in St. Louis Park, right by the golf course. It was probably the most successful apartment building put up last year, and it was owned, built, and managed by Stephen Scott, which Barb is, how many years have been there, Barb?
I can't say. 35.
So we hired them, as they'll be our leasing agent, and we've also been working on them with the demographics, the performer, and there's nobody better than demographics than themselves. So if you can answer a few of these slides, let me know when you want to change.
All right.
If you could say your name and state, spell your last name for city record, please.
Oh, it's Barbara Halverson, H-A-L-V-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you.
And I'm the president of Stephen Scott Management. And Stephen Scott Management is the largest privately-held property management company in the metropolitan area. We currently manage real estate in Eden Prairie and have for years. We have Edenvale and Eden Glen Apartments right off of Mitchell Road and Valley View. We developed Parkway Apartments over here in Anderson Lakes Parkway in the mid-'80s, and that was sold. And we also manage the Hills of Eden Prairie, which is a townhome development, that's right off of 212, kind of behind the church over here off of 212. So we have quite a bit of experience in the city, although we haven't developed here for a while, but we do know the area. We've also been involved in the lease-up of 18 new developments in the last 10 years, and that's one of the most, or the largest number of developments that any company has been involved in. So we've seen a lot of change and transition of who the renter is and how people are developing buildings these days. And what Scott has told you is really true, you know, that the new generation, the millennial generation, is the largest generation that we've ever seen. Baby boomers are 80 million, and millennials that are coming up, there's 82 million. And they are in the rental market, and they're going to be in the rental market. They're a real specific target market that we would reach out to, and we believe this property will house probably 60% of that target market. There are kids just coming out of school up to age 30, probably will also go into a little bit of the Generation X. They're young professionals, working people, and they will take up most of the studios in one-bedrooms. Most of the development you see today, whether it's in a lot of the suburbs, in the upper areas, or uptown area of Minneapolis, and the North Loop where all the development's going on, university's a little different, a lot of them are smaller units. It's a different mix of apartments than we've seen in the past, and it's really targeted to the newer generation of renter. These kids grew up, they don't like to share apartments, they didn't have to share their own bedrooms, they didn't have to share their own bathrooms, so they're not so much about room mating up, you know, when they get out of school, they kind of want their own thing, and they like nice things. They grew up in homes with granite finishes, and so we just see this new demographic coming into the rental market. And the rents that are going to be charged on this property are about 50 cents a square foot less than what you would be paying if you moved into the city. So they're really affordable in a relative sense compared to other new development. So we believe about 60% of the property will be the younger generation, and they'll take up most of the studios in one-bedrooms, and they'll typically be one-person households. So therefore, they would most likely have one car, if they have a car, and they probably will have a car, because this is still the suburban area. And the balance of the people living in the building that may move into some one-bedrooms, they could move into the two-bedrooms, would be divorced people, you know, they have their kids in the weekend, they need a little bigger place, more of a traditional renter, transuries in and out. We have a lot of business that we do with Cargill and a lot of the companies around the area that transfer people in and out. Some of the more traditional Generation X people, there's always the renter that likes to move to the newest and the best, and so some of them will also move into the building. And in the larger units, the one or two bedrooms, they're probably going to have more cars, maybe two cars. I did a study of three, of about five of our apartment properties, to just kind of determine, you know, in the old days, you used to have to put in two stalls per apartment, and now they are determining the number of stalls more by bedroom. So one of the properties that we manage out here in Eden Prairie has 174 apartments, but that's 281 bedrooms. And in the 281 bedrooms, we only have 276 parking stalls. It's about one-to-one, let's just say it's close to one-to-one. And I just drove through that parking lot right now, and the outdoor parking lot, the property is 96% occupied. Over half the outdoor parking is vacant. You know, everybody gets one garage underneath, but half the outside's vacant. Then Edenville, or Eden Glen Apartments, which is right next door, 70 apartments, about 125 bedrooms, with 144 parking stalls, so they're about one-to-one per bedroom. That property, too, is, I had a test done the other day, and I just drove through that one, too, the parking lot's at least half empty, but it's about 69% of all the parking is parked. We have a property on Minnetoka Boulevard and Highway 169. I'll just knew the number of bedrooms, 269 bedrooms, 310 parking stalls, it's about 1.1. And that one is 100% occupied, and they have, most of their parking gets used, all underground, but it's still at about one-to-one ratio. A property that we manage in Plymouth on 169 and 394, 321 bedrooms, 509 parking stalls, that's about 1.5 per unit, about 80% occupied parking. And that property is 95% occupied, too. So the point of the matter in these suburban properties, and those other properties are a much higher mix of larger units, two bedrooms. And my experience in the business has been that when you have a parking problem at a property, it's because you have a larger, a mix of larger units. We manage a 100-unit property in Inver Grove Heights, it's all three bedrooms. We've had parking problems for a long time there, because obviously, your target market's roommates, families that have more cars. But we really traditionally do not have problems in a property that has more wide range of unit mixes, or for sure, the smaller units. As Scott mentioned, we developed the Ellipse on Excelsior, which is on Excelsior, the old Al's Bar site, as everyone knows it. There's 176 bedrooms in that property, and we have 176 underground parking stalls. It's one per bedroom. No residents are allowed to park on the surface, because we have commercial in there, we have a restaurant, a clinic, and a physical therapy, and a nail salon in there. So residents are not allowed to park on the surface at all, that's all for the commercial. So of the 176 bedrooms and the 176 garages, we have to take 17 of those underground garages and reserve them for the commercial people during the day. And we still have about, we're 99% occupied, and we don't have a resident parking problem. So the young generation doesn't have all the cars that we used to have. So I thought those were interesting statistics, and if anybody wants anything more specific, I could provide it to you. So I think that was what Scott wanted me to talk about.
That's great, thank you, Barb. And I wanted to touch base with you here, and this is the restaurant that she's referring to, right here. I don't know if you've ever been there, it's called the Mill Valley Kitchen, it's beautiful, and I think, like Mr. Fransen, was referring to the parking issues that he has heard of, difficulties in St. Louis Park. I'm guessing the two are this one, the Ellipse, because there's so much retail on the main, and it's a successful restaurant on the main. And the other one is Excelsior Grand, which has very little parking at all. In fact, this is Excelsior Grand, and I put a yellow arrow there to show you, if you count all the stalls along there, there's about 13 stalls per side, and each side has about seven retail stores. The one on the left there has got Panera, it's got Starbucks, exercise, but you can see, they spent more time in the middle with the green space and less parking in the road, that's why they're having a difficult time there. I enlarged it here to see, so I could actually count those numbers and get a real good feel for exactly what I was referring to. The next item that I've got here is, I didn't want to build just another apartment building that people drive by and it's just another apartment building. And it may sound kind of odd or cheesy, but I really wanted to get a building that has a, and I don't want to go as far as to say hip, but a building that people really like, really want to be there, no matter what the age, and it really feels good. So then I seeked out a group called Carbon Creative, who did that with a development in Uptown, the biggest one called Flux, and they also did it with a development in Uptown called Blue. So we hired Carbon Creative, and that is the owner sitting back there, Cheryl, and I'll let her take over for a couple of minutes, if she wouldn't mind, and give you some idea of thoughts and ideas that we'll be doing here in Eden Prairie with our building.
We don't add the cheesy.
Let me see, you just say your name and state, spell your last name for city record.
G R D O N.
Perfect, thank you.
We're from Carbon Creative. We do, we're a full-service marketing and design agency. We do branding and website development, full service. What we would do for Hunter Emerson for this building is actually give it a personality and a soul. We try to look at the building, the community that it's going into, the target market, and make sure that, that that's very clear in all of the marketing materials and the name of the building, and that it attracts the end user that we're trying to get at. We also work really hard to incorporate the community into our marketing, and so any building or business, we don't just specialize in apartment buildings, but any building or business that we work with, we really look at the community that it's going into, make sure that our marketing materials help to highlight the highlights of that area. We make sure to work with the community organizations, the different businesses in the area, to create a bond between the building and those businesses, to make sure that people know what they're getting when they move into it. We worked with Blue and Flux most recently. Flux opened in January of this year, had their first occupancy certificates, and they're 100% leased. And they got their second occupancy certificate just in March, and we don't have any units, and have a huge demand for it. And part of that is the marketing that went into it, and the buzz that we created around the building. And we would do the same for a building that goes into Eden Prairie. We'd really take a look at the environment here, at the businesses around the building, at the different events that are going on, and if there aren't events, we create those events around the building, to make sure that people are excited to live there, know what's, know what their opportunities are. And those tactics translate into leasing up the building quickly, so that the city is, has more residents, that people are going to Buca and the different businesses in the area, and that Hunter Emerson has a successful development and is on to their next one, hopefully also in Eden Prairie.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Next thing I just want to kind of run through with you is, this is my perceptions, and Mr. Rick Weiss is here as well from, Rick Weiss, Rick Fenske, I'm sorry, with Weiss Construction, is here for any questions to do with the construction end of it. But this is, I'm just going to run through some ideas, because I know Mr. Fransen was wondering what kind of amenities we'd have. This is some concepts and ideas of what we expect in the community area. We want that feel, the open community room. We'll have a very good workout facility. My business partner owns the Snap Fitness Corporation, and Peter Taunton is his name, and he will be involved with designing, laying out the fitness facility in here. It will not be a Snap Fitness, but it'll be a heck of a nice fitness facility. We'll have Wi-Fi areas. We are going to do, what I was talking to you about is the, kind of a Lido deck, a deck of amenities, that'll be above the parking garage, that'll be overlooking, kind of towards Buca, in almost an open area. I put this in here, this is the one that Gray Star is doing in Uptown, but you can almost see with the atrium area inside, that's kind of the theme that we were looking for. This is a new 600 unit they're doing down in Uptown. Here's what I want to do up in the amenity deck, I know Mr. Fransen, you're looking for ideas, this is what I like to see as far as an outdoor barbecue area. I'd like to see an outdoor dining, you know, sitting area, relaxing area, outdoor firepit. Don't know about the pool, I know we've chatted about it. I would like to do this extra movie night on one night a week, but I did hear that the Bluffs got in trouble from Hollywood, true story, that they're coming after them, and they have to stop their movie night. So I don't know if that would go or not. This is the trail that I look very much forward to connecting into. You can see Buca up there on the right as you exit. And this building will be a real flagship, I think. Every night when I drive home, I'm excited to go down this road two, three times a day, but it will stick right up behind Buca, and I think it'll be a beautiful sight. I'd also like to entertain the idea of some rental bikes, or something around here, to keep people mobile around, because this will be a TOD area between Southwest Station and the new station. You can stop by X Bikes to see what they might have. Here's the bridge that's out behind us. I did speak with Leslie Stovering in regards to the wetlands, because we want to be a pet-friendly hotel, our hotel apartment, and I want to ask Leslie if we could go across the street where we own the land as well, we own an acre across the street, to incorporate some walking trails for dog trails, and she was very open and would support that as long as we stayed out of the wetland itself. So this is what we plan to do, like to do. Probably throw a dog wash in there when they get back. This just gets back to the underground parking garages and what we can expect it'll look like underneath. This is it, under construction in Flux that Cheryl was referring to. This is what it costs to get so drastic on these. Again, just getting back to the parking ratios, we would really be open to the one-per-bedroom is really what we'd like to see. The two-per-bedroom really takes it away. So in fairness to Mr. Fransen, and ask him that we come in with a plan that would meet all the current criteria, I couldn't have been here today because the project wouldn't have worked if I would have met the setbacks and the parking ratios, because it just won't perform. I did something really kind of quirky after I had this conversation with Mr. Fenske about the parking and how upside-down it made a building. Last Monday night, I jumped in my car at 10:30, and like a nerd, I drove around parking lots for an hour and a half in Eden Prairie, and I drove through Southwest Station, I drove through Water Tower Plaza, I went into Water Tower Plaza's parking garage, and I went over to the Bluffs. I counted every stall I could drive by and every car that was in each stall. As you're showing, as you can see here, I don't know how familiar you are with it, but this is what I'm used to seeing when I drive down Highway 5, and this is what tweaked my curiosity, because when I come down Highway 5, if you can see it in the back right there, alls I see is that orange lift up there, it's been there for months and months, and an empty parking lot. So I drove back there, and as you can see, this is June 10th at 11:00 a.m. This is June 6th at 7:00 a.m. June 10th at 10:00 a.m., again, you can just see, basically, these back parking lots are working as storage areas. I thought this was very interesting. This is one on June 6th at 7:00 a.m. And if you look deep into that picture on June 4th, two days earlier, see that same blue car sitting back there at 10:30 at night? That car hasn't moved for two days. That car hasn't moved for two days and nothing, that whole parking lot in the back there, if you look straight beyond that, that would be Highway Five. So, these parking lots are sitting empty at ten-thirty at night, and Mr. Fenske had told me, high times to go look would be ten at night till five in the morning, the highest park time. So, I went there on June fourth, no holiday, no weekend day, everybody should be home, and I went there at ten-thirty at night on June fourth. School's not out yet, and did my own count. So, these are all the pictures I'm verifying. This is again, it shows you the time of day I took the pictures and which units I took them at. This one here is interesting. You can see the van there. There the van is again, a couple of days later, just sitting out there. And that's the back lot of Southwest Station overlooking the walkway here behind flagship. There was a van again on Sunday. So, here's what I came up with after everything I did. This is Southwest Station. I counted two-hundred-and-eight stalls. Of those two-hundred-and-eight, eighty-nine of them had cars in them, which is a forty-three percent rate. Then I went over to Water Tower Plaza. This is, I just wanted to take pictures to verify the time of night I was there, so if anybody questioned it, they can find the cameras and match them up and they'll see my car there. This is, I drove in underneath Water Tower Plaza and took pictures inside the garage, and if you remember, this garage is shared by the commercial space of Old Chicago. So, this is public underground parking. And this is ten-fifty at night at Water Tower Plaza, and this is what I saw underneath. Here's what my statistics were there. I counted thirty-four exterior stalls. Of those, seventeen were occupied. Interior underground was two-hundred-nine, and of that, seventy-one were taken. So, there was thirty-six percent occupancy in that building that time of night. I went over to the Bluffs, pulled in there, eleven-twenty at night, and you can see the boats in the back. This is the parking lot right up in front. There's a few more cars along the front there, and I counted eighty-seven exterior stalls, forty-seven of them are occupied, so fifty-four percent. I did not get in the garages of that one. Buca, I came here during the dinner hours, and that's what I'm seeing there, and it's very interesting. Buca is extremely overparked, the backside is empty, and the rear lot is completely empty. And I know that Buca is actually looking for more of the part coming out. So, the end of my conclusion to my study was, I counted five-hundred-and-thirty-eight stalls and two-hundred-and-twenty-four of them had cars in them, which tells me that there's a forty-two percent occupancy for each stall that was built. So, that was the reason why, as we came back, I know it's a big issue, but it was a do-or-die issue, and that's why I physically went out there myself to find out really what was going on. And actually, I came home happy that I spent time driving around parking lots. In that, there's a couple of things that we've talked about doing, and one was, Mr. Fenske has done what's called the Hour Car for some of the buildings downtown, where they've left them there where you can rent cars by the hour in the building. So, people don't need cars and they can rent them by the hour. There's a Zip Car, and then actually, I stopped over at GE and talked to GE about possibly doing something con jointly with them with the electric cars, as a possibility. So, as we look at this, I think we mesh well for our location, as far as the live-work, dream initiative. We are asking, and we hope that you'll grant us an approval to move to the next step with City Council. We will be happy to continue discussions. The one thing that I did do since the May fourth application, I had Mr. Mohagen redesign the building, and we came up with some parking issues, or some, not parking issues, some parking stalls with parallel parking around the edge of our building, and we picked up another twenty parking stalls, if indeed you'd like to see more. So, with that, I would like to ask the Planning Board to seriously consider moving us through up to Planning Commission, because time really is of the essence here. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. If you have any questions, I'm sure the Commission will have some, and we'll get back to you. First, Mr. Fransen, if you would go through the staff report for us.
Well, I think three of the members of the Planning Commission were here when it went through the last guide plan update process. And it went on for about a year and a half. I hope you thought it only took two months in time period to get it done, but we got it done. And very early on, we had a joint meeting with our City Council, because we were talking about some philosophical shifts and how we were going to grow in our community, which was a lot different from our last guide plan update in the latter part of nineteen-ninety. And we talked about fifteen thousand more employees, another fifteen thousand more people, another eight thousand or so more housing units, and where were we going to put these and where would be the best locations to do it. Two areas we came up with as a group was the town center portion of the major center area, and this kind of came in on the heels as we were wrapping up the town center plan. And we also looked at Golden Triangle. Now, Golden Triangle study actually kind of dates back to nineteen-ninety-five, and initially we did that study to reduce the AM and peak hour traffic, because we had ramp meters on it, all the ramp axes to the road, and when they turned the meters off, we didn't have a problem, but we still saw the value in having the intensity in those particular locations. So, if you look at this project, and if you're asking staff where you think it makes the most sense, it makes the most sense in the town center area. That's where we were planning buildings between five to ten stories in heights and densities up to seventy-five units per acre, and their parking ratio would fit perfectly with the town center ordinance, because we designed it as a minimum of one parking space per unit and a maximum of one-point-five spaces per unit, whether they would be underground or structured parking. And those were for the buildings where you had commercial on the first floor and you had housing above. When you had a freestanding residential site, the ratios changed to a minimum of one-point-zero up to one-point-two-five maximum. The thinking was, you've got this large critical mass of housing, you've got this large critical mass of commercial, it's all in a short walking distance. We were trying to create this compact, walkable area, be close to light rail. So, that's how we came up with that. This is a freestanding site. It's close to light rail in terms of a half-mile diameter that planners talked about quite a few years ago, but it's not within the ten-minute walk shot, which is the prevailing wisdom, that you need to be able to walk to that area on all sorts of, types of weather days, not just the beautiful day that we have today. And if you walk from this site, either those stations having to cross the roads, the signals and intersections, it's a little bit farther away than you would have with the housing in either Golden Triangle or the housing that you would have in the town center area. When we look at parking, the amount of data that's provided is rather limited. Some of it is rather old. If anybody who's ever looked at an I T E manual, the parking counts they have are few and far between, and they're outdated, and they usually don't match up kind of apples to apples in terms of the size of the project or the actual project type. So, you kind of have to discount that. The parking numbers that they talked about tonight is a little bit less than ten percent of the total number of apartment projects we have in Eden Prairie. We have somewhere between thirty-five and forty. If they were asking for a variance for less parking, it wouldn't meet the practical difficulties test, because the unique circumstances for the less parking is an action that's created by the applicant, it's not the application of the code. If you're looking at reduced parking by a waiver, you have to ask yourself the question, how does the city benefit by having less parking? Or what are we getting out of this project that we normally wouldn't be getting if we were complying with the city code requirements? I think the best way to look at parking here is to do a code amendment. I mean, we're certainly open to going out and looking at a parking study of all of our apartment sites, and you got to make sure you do it at the right times of the day and the right days of the week, and you talk with all the apartment owners and talk about their occupancy and use over time, and then you'll have a local patent established here in the suburbs to say whether or not we actually could get by with less than the two-point-oh that we have today. Our recommendation for this project is to either, it's a beautiful project, we like the architecture, we just wish we had a three-acre site in the town center where this would fit in perfectly, and then we'd have a conforming project, and we'd be in and out the door in five minutes and wouldn't have to go through a long presentation either by the applicant or the staff. But we're not in that situation here. And so, when you're looking at the comprehensive guide plan, you have to ask yourself the question, is it in the right spot? And if it's not in the right spot, would we still consider the site for housing? And I think that we would, because we do have an approved plan, which was fifty-seven senior units, of which forty percent was affordable over commercial. And so, we initially asked the question before they even started their planning process, would be open to apartments? And we said we would. It would be open to more than fifty-seven units on the property, but we had a caveat, because we wanted to treat this site as consistently we've had with all our other apartment sites. And for the apartment sites that went over seventeen-point-four units per acre, which is the maximum allowed by code, and I'll use Water Tower as an example in Lincoln Park, because they're around forty units per acre, they complied with the parking requirements and they complied with the setback requirements. And the only waivers we granted were for heightened density. So, if they could establish an apartment project under those parameters, we were okay with that. And that's why the staff recommendation is for continuance, to revise the plans to be more reflective of some of the other projects that we have in town.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Fransen. Before we get to questions from the Commission, I wanted to see if, as this is a public hearing, if there's any member of the audience that would like to come forth and speak on this project. Mr. Carlson?
If I may, I would just like to respond to Mr. Fransen's comment about what are we getting? What I'm giving today to the city is an investment of thirty-five million dollars that's extremely hard to come by today. None of us has seen it since two thousand and six. I sure haven't seen it being in the end development world. I just came out from the tornado, thrilled to get going again, and I've got a business partner and business team to make this happen. I think the fact that what I'm asking for the city is no money and three waivers is a very inexpensive thing to ask for in today's world to invest thirty-five million dollars in the community. And I hope you guys, and I hope that that is something the staff will look at. The other thing I am deeding, I'm going to deed him an outlot, I'm going to give him an acre land as an outlot, and a huge tax base. So, that being said, I hope that you will consider to keep us moving on, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Commission members, do you have any questions for staff or the project proponent? Travis?
Go ahead.
Who's first? Who's first?
Mike, I was just curious, your opinion, when we think about the parking ratio. I was kind of intrigued by this idea of attracting people based on demographics by age group and so on, and they may have different requirements. If we look at the growth plans for the future of the city, should we be taking into account some of that, or I just wonder what your thoughts are?
I think we took that into consideration when we developed the ordinance for the town center, that that would be the environment where perhaps a portion of the millennium generation might be. And we fully expected to have smaller units and more units in that location, and that was another reason for having less parking requirements.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Carlson. First is, when guests visit the residence, where would they park?
If you look at the number of parking stalls that we've supplied, it's going to be substantially over the one per bedroom. I believe right now, we've got to set up this three-hundred-and-ten.
So, they would park inside the building though?
We'll have inside and outside parking both, and there'll be secured areas going down in the ramp.
Okay. Because on the plan, I didn't really see the outside parking area.
In the new, because the new plan has it, and yeah, Mark Anderson and Todd Mohagen here, they can show you the new diagram.
Okay. Well, before they come up, and I'll just ask the other two questions, then. You have the two other outlots separate from the primary lot.
Yes, sir.
What's the plan for use of those?
Well, it's a good question.
So, you're going to give one to the city and then the other one is...
Well, it's a good question, because part of it, the road goes through that lot, that outlot.
Let me just do this like a tray. It won't work.
The road goes through part of that, part of that, and then there was extra parking, and that would be the other option. If you really wanted more black, more parking, we could look at possibly adding it on the side that I have next to the Buca parking lot in the back there, but that's just making the big open black parking lot, more black parking lot, that I just don't think it makes good deal of sense. And then the one acre outlot in the back will be deeded over to the city, and that was the area that I asked Leslie if we could use for the dog walking area.
Okay. So, from an operational perspective, there isn't a concern about having potentially the general public come into your somewhat secured indoor parking area? That's a normal practice?
Well, and again, we need to find tune what it's going to be and what it is not going to be, but we do have twenty spots outside for street parking or on our side of our building parking.
Yeah. Then the final question is just the amenities that you showed us examples of. Again, looking at your site plan, it doesn't appear real obvious where those would fit in. Are you considering putting some of those on the roof?
On the deck. Yep. If you look at the second floor deck, if you go to the rendering...
Just over the parking structure there in the front of the building?
Yep.
Yeah, there's some space there, but not...
No, it's a big, big, big space. Todd, do you have the dimensions of that space, or Rick?
It's about eleven thousand square feet.
Okay. Okay, that's more than I would have guessed just by looking at the drawings.
Yeah, and it's above the parking garage, so it's a good natural spot, and then we're going to have the fitness room overlooking the glass overlooking that, up beyond that, and so the community rooms as well, because we know that that's got to be the main focus and spectacular, that we believe has to be spectacular.
Right.
That upper deck that's got the amenities.
Yep.
And I know there's a couple of them that are doing those downtown right now, and that's kind of the concept. Mr. Weiss, we've chatted about that. They're doing one right now downtown.
Okay. That's all I have for questions.
Thank you.
Travis?
I have a question possibly for staff here or a project proponent, if they've done the research. We have apartments that are outside of the town center area that are existing presently. What are the parking densities of those areas? Are they not conforming within the code?
They're all conforming with the exception of the senior housing projects. So, any of the market rate apartments that we have, and that's probably thirty-three out of thirty-six are market rate, they're all have equivalency of two parking spaces per unit. Higher density projects like Water Tower, they have ninety percent of their parking underground, because they're a relatively small site. Lincoln Park has seventy percent of their required parking underground. That was the only way that they could fit the required parking in. All of the other apartment projects outside of those are at seventeen-point-four units per acre, so the density's low enough, so there's plenty of room to provide the surface parking, and it's simply one level of parking underneath the building, or they're detached freestanding garages.
I, for one, am not a fan of seeing a big black abyss as a parking stall either or parking lot. Having multi-layered underground parking with structures above, it makes a lot of sense. I'm not necessarily sure if I can get my head around if this is the right location for this project yet, but I mean, the parking issue, I don't necessarily see as too great of a concern initially, in my opinion, but the location within the guide plan, which of course, in and of itself definitionally is a guide plan. I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, so that's just my comments.
Thanks, Travis. John?
Travis, you just did the, you walked right into exactly the same comment I was going to make. I actually love the presentation, love the concept, but I don't love the location. I'm not even sure I have a huge problem with the parking. You know, I think that there's some reasonably good arguments that were presented, perhaps need to be verified a little bit, but that spot for, is it fair to say the highest density we have in the city?
Yes.
Mike? Just, I got to get my head around, I'm like Travis, I got to get my head around that location. The idea I love, and as you say, if it were in the town center or someplace that we had guided for it, it'd be, I'd be behind it a heartbeat. So, not really a question, but more just a comment.
May I respond to that, please?
Certainly. Mr. Carlson?
In respect of both of you, this site, when I first approached the city, was referred to as kind of a odd, lonely, orphan, lousy, no-good site. No one's around, we can do whatever kind of in that site. It's not really too much. There's nobody to complain, it's just out there by itself. So, it's hard for me to sit here, or it's hard to say that there could be a better use for it. We are about a six-minute walk to all the restaurants at Southwest Station. We're going to be a five-minute walk or maybe a three-minute walk to the light rail. So, when we talk about, I mean, quite honestly, this will be closer to light rail than if you're up at Walmart where the shopping, where the main town's supposed to be. you're up at Walmart where the shopping, where the main town's supposed to be. So to say that this is not going to be a good spot, I disagree. Well, thank goodness I disagree, I wouldn't be here tonight because where the, me and Mr. Franson...
I hope you disagree.
Exactly. So we think it's a good site, a perfect site. It's in great sightlines as you drive home, and I think it'll be a great location for people who are just in and out quickly in Eden Prairie.
Mr. Carlson, am I right in assuming that you are not seeking any form of continuance? That's not an option for you to see, you know?
Yeah, and I don't mean that in a harsh manner, but what I do mean, and time really is of the essence, and it's a, it's a big deal that we get going, get into the ground. We still have a lot, a lot ahead of us. And we would ask that we would be voted on tonight or obviously approved.
Up or down either way?
Yes, we'd love to see your support.
Right. Mr. Franson, I have a question regarding the light rail in terms of the station at Mitchell Road. Can you speak to where that process is at right now and what the probability is of that station even existing in the future?
Well, first off, the Met Council has to approve a consultant to help design the stations and the light rail. And the Metropolitan Council, through their project office, will have oversight over that. Once someone is on board, it's going to take roughly a year to go through the public process for municipal consent. Our city council, St. Louis Park, Minnetoka, everybody along the line, has to give municipal consent of location of the light rail and the location of the stations. The Met Council and their design team, their consultants, contractors, are going to be coming to us, and they're going to tell us whether or not they think the current alignment is in the right spot, whether it should be moved to a different alignment, whether we can have all five stations or three stations, we won't know. We're not going to know that for at least a year. I would say that the likelihood of the station, if there's an end of the line, there's going to be a station at the end of the line. So you could probably say there would be one at Mitchell unless they're thinking of ending the line someplace else, and that hasn't even come up for any discussion at this point.
As far as the project timeline is still slated for, under twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen?
Twenty eighteen, probably a little later in twenty eighteen because we're, still haven't wrapped up the draft environmental impact statement and the final environmental impact statement. And you have to go through approximately a year and a half to two years of engineering to get those plans together, and then you have the three to four years' worth of construction in order to go.
Right. Okay. Jerry, you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of comments about the project, not really a question. I guess, I'm comfortable with the project, that when we go back and we try to relate this to the town center plan, that's such a flawed plan, and I think any relationship to that is really distorted. That town center is the Walmart site, Brunswick Zone, and Emerson. Those are not properties that are changing anytime in the near future at all. So we can just kind of throw out the concept of doing this kind of a project in the town center location. It's not going to happen. So then you just look at this as a new freestanding project, and you say, what's the best use? What's the best value to our community for this piece of land? And I think, boy, this is doing a lot on a difficult little site, and it's providing a lot to the community, and it's providing a new type of product that we haven't seen before. And so I think if we can make it work, I think we should help them make it work.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Travis?
A question for the proponent. What kind of market analysis did you use to come up with rental rates and various other unit densities or unit sizes and stuff like that?
We've got some reports from Maxfield Research, and we've also hired Stephen Scott, and that's when I engaged their services, because they are the experts around those two folks.
So then the millennials would be the primary occupants or renters of...
They help me with unit mix is what they've done, which shows how many we should do because the studios and the abundance of studios is something new and different. But again, I don't see, I want a place where the twenty-five, twenty-six-year-old can go to without having to go move uptown to get kind of a fun place to be. And I also want somebody relocating, or somebody here who's in business with United Health close. I think that'll be a big draw, and we're close to that. We're very close to them. It's right off the freeway. Every time I drive home at night, I think that's, could be people coming home and think, Cheryl, that would be a marketing, you could be home right now. That would be on marketing. We have a sign that says you could be home right now, right?
They will be home.
They will be home.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I guess kind of what I'd like to do is just kind of go down the line and kind of gauge where everyone is at. Sounds like the proponents looking for kind of an up and down tonight, and so I just kind of want to take an informal vote to kind of see where we're at. Steve, if you'd want to start?
I'm going to agree with one of the comments that was just made. I do like the project. I like the idea of a different demographic potentially being attracted to the city. And I must admit, I wasn't here working on the standards that were created in terms of parking and things like that, but having been in marketing for a long period of time, it does seem quite logical to me that the behavior of the people that could be attracted to this building, if your analysis is correct, could require a different amount of parking space and so on. I do think it could be a nice project for Eden Prairie overall, so I'm supportive.
I'm also supportive, and maybe one thing that could help people get more comfortable with it is, if you have those two outlots and one of them's going to be deeded over to the city, reserve the second outlot for some time period, five years or something, and that can be additional parking expansion if need be. And then if it shows that it's not needed, then you can use it for something else.
Mr. Jerry? John?
I'm on the fence. It's more, more height, more density than is ideal for me. Understand it's needed for the project, but for that piece of property. Otherwise, I like the concept, not overly hung up about the parking. We haven't really talked too much about the setbacks or anything, but I guess at a first glance, I'm not overly hung up about those. So I'm kind of on the fence right now.
Well, that's not a whole lot of help. I would have to say, I am actually in a similar predicament as John here. I understand completely what the project proponent is trying to accomplish here. I actually am a resident at Southwest Station. I actually live in the building where you took those photos of that parking lot. I drive by it every day, so I totally understand what you're talking about. So the parking, to me, is not the issue. The setbacks to me aren't the issue. I think I would really just echo Mr. Franson's sentiment of this would be the ideal project if we could just find a spot in the town center area or the Golden Triangle area. And also the pitch as a transit-oriented development type development doesn't totally fly with me. I don't believe it is a six-minute walk to Southwest Station from there. It's a five-minute walk from where I live to Southwest Station. And to walk to Buca from where I live, it's going to be at least ten to fifteen minutes. And so that's not something, but that's why I asked Mr. Franson about the Mitchell Road station, because that's much more of a feasible transit station, more kind of fits the transit-oriented development framework. And really, again, it's just, it's a density in that particular area which I am not, I could say, like I said, if it was just in a different location, I would be more favorable to support it, but at this point, with the uncertainty of light rail, I guess I would kind of say I am going to be more towards the nay category at this point. That's where I'm at. Kevin?
Well, we've had a lot of interesting discussion this evening. I think the project is a worthy project. Hopefully, you're going to be right on your demographics, capturing these people that are in their mid to high twenties. Again, you know, the setbacks and the parking, I mean, we can, you know, I always say the comprehensive guide plan is just that. It's a guide that, you know, we follow, but there is interpretation to it, too. It's, I just kind of look at the development as being, you know, having a size twelve foot, trying to fit it into a size twelve, or size five shoe. I like the concept. I don't necessarily know if that's going to be the right location either. But quite honestly, that wouldn't, you know, that wouldn't hang me up. I think, I think it's a good project. I think it's worthy. I think there is a lot of work to be done in the town center and major center area, so I think we need to just table that for now and just take a look at this specific project. I would be in favor of it.
Thanks, Kevin. Travis?
I think my comments may have been taken out of context. I was trying to formulate my own mind. When I, when a project comes in front of me, I usually put it on a scale, and I do a Ben Franklin balance sheet in my own mind and try to figure out, well, what is like, what is the economies of it, the pro or con, or the long-term sustainability, or the feasibility of the various proponents and the various components of it? What is its reasonability and function? And to see an orphaned location with somebody that wants to dedicate a lot of money, I mean, I get wide-eyed when I see something like that, when fulfilling a landlocked, or not necessarily a landlocked completely, but you know, a piece of land that's needing to do something with. I mean, that's, that ranks high in my portfolio. So I was not necessarily certain if I approved of the location, but the other factors in mind supersede that on my list, and I would be in favor going forward with it. It's just unfortunate that it is a size twelve and a size five shoe. Like you stated, it's just unfortunate the way that the, that the other parcels around it are, and the road already existing is just put in that predicament, so.
Just a comment about the size of the project. I think that the fact that it is a large project in a small parcel is somewhat offset by the fact that there's so much open space around it. When you look at everything to the east of the project, there's just a lot of open area there, and it's not going to be developed as anything else. It's just always going to be open swampland. And so it's not like we're starting some new trend that there's going to be five and six-story buildings, one right after the other in this area. It is going to be somewhat isolated, and so I don't think that it's going to increase the overall density of the area beyond just what it does in itself.
Yeah, and that's a definite fine point. I did notice that in seeing that, well, to the east and the north, there's a large buffer, and then on the other side, you've got business. And then to the west is the bakery, industrial, so I, I mean, there's a lot of buffer zone around it, most undoubtedly, especially with the highway right there. So I was trying to formulate what a five-story building would look like from a portfolio, or portfolio, a profile view on the highway, and I don't think it would be too out of context or too out of place either. So yeah, I would, I would go forward with it because it's definitely doing something with the land.
Jerry, any changes potentially? You're just still on the fence?
Well, I, to be honest, my, you know, Travis brings up a good point, what's kind of our thought pattern behind it. I think that's fair to discuss. My thought pattern is, I've driven by that corner now for thirty-three years, and when I, having been on the planning commission for quite a while, there's certain projects that I go by that we've approved that I say, I'm glad I was part of that project. And there's a couple, to be honest, that I still drive by and I go, that isn't what I pictured at all, and it wasn't as successful as I'd hoped it would be. And unfortunately, my gut is that the size twelve shoe on the size five property leads me to feel that, you know, five years from now, when I drive by there, I might feel that way about it. So it's, it's a real kind of intuitive perspective.
Right. I apologize, I called you Jerry. Sorry, John. Steve?
Yeah, so we have stated our initial feelings about this. I mean, I think that's a fair point, the aesthetic value of the property, how's the property going to look when the, when the development is completed, and will that fit into the surrounding area in a way that's aesthetically pleasing? The other thing I would say, and I'm not changing what I said earlier about being a supporter, but the other thing I would say is, it's fairly precedent-setting when you compare this kind of density to the kind of density that was in the master plan, even though I once again was not involved in that. It's a pretty significant departure from that, what a multiple of maybe three or more. And I don't know whether that's precedent-setting or not. I don't know how this works in the city. If you do this once or twice, is it likely that it could occur in a number of other situations outside of the center of the city?
Thanks, Steve. All right.
I just have a comment for Steve about that. But, you know, in the past, we have made some pretty significant changes to density that when Presbyterian Homes came to us back four years ago, we approved a fourteen-story building, you know, off of Prairie Center Drive. And before that, we'd always talked about nothing more than five stories tall. And so when, when a project looks right for a piece of property, we say, you know, let's do something with it. And so I think that there's precedent for making changes like this and accepting the density and the height to make it work. But the other thing is, once we take action on this, when does it go to city council? It's the council's meeting in the middle of July? So if this were to be continued till June twenty-fifth, it could still be on the council meeting agenda?
It can be, depends what the work would be, the reason for the continuance. If you're asking them to make some modifications to the plan, I think that would be appropriate to have them come back in a couple of weeks, you get to see the final plan.
The only reason I ask is kind of twofold. One is, where we really haven't talked about the setbacks and what we're doing with the setbacks, maybe we could have a clearer understanding of the setback variance that we're potentially approving. And then also, we could have a better understanding of the outdoor amenities, that that was another question that, that staff had asked for, to have a better commitment on outdoor amenities. Maybe between now and June twenty-fifth, you can show us more on that, and then we could be comfortable taking action at that time.
I'll take the other side of that. I just don't think those are the big issues, Jerry.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I know neither of those would really change my mind one way or the other.
Yeah, okay.
So I, that's fine. Might as well get it, get it done.
Mike, would this be a continuance to June twenty-fifth or July ninth?
Well, if, if you were agreeing with the staff assessment, I mean, it would be a complete redo of the project to meet the setbacks and the parking requirements, so that would be substantial. Usually, if you're talking about a two-week continuance, there's some technicalities that you want to get your hands around and resolve that before we gift wrap this plan in a package to send on to the council.
Yeah. I think if I'm hearing everyone correctly, too, so correct me if I'm wrong, fellow commissioners, but the, the concerns really aren't the setbacks, the parking, Jerry's got some concerns with amenities and so on and so forth. I think the project was laid out very well. I think our concerns are, again, you know, how this is going to look in this area, this area that has not been developed and been sitting dormant for years and years and years and years. So I, again, you know, I think that's what we're stumbling over. I think our charge this evening should be either vote yea or nay and bring it to the council. I think we're all comfortable with, with the setbacks, you know, with the parking and so on and so forth. I think we've discussed that in great detail, and I think we're comfortable with that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm fine with those items. Absolutely. Actually, I'm fine with the whole project.
Okay. Mr. Carlson, correct me if I'm wrong, that's, the setback requirements, if you went back and redid those, it sounded like you said that was going to blow the project out of the water.
Yeah, and I think that, again, the setbacks are getting the unit count, unit counts getting, so you know, smaller units, but then the parking throws it off whack. So I, in respect, and I appreciate everybody's feedback, unfortunately, I don't think more time can really change. I thought a lot before I came to this meeting tonight, and it wasn't that I'm shooting from the hip here, I've thought a lot about it, what would a continuance mean? And quite honestly, the building with those changes just doesn't function, the performer doesn't work for us.
Right.
Or my business team that we've formulated with, and as you know, like we talked about, it's difficult in financing today and...
Okay. Understand. Thank you very much. That being said, any further comments or ready for a vote? That being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the guide plan change for community commercial to high-density residential on three point oh nine eight acres, planned unit development concert view on three point oh nine eight acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on three point oh nine eight acres. 3.098 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.098 acres, zoning district change for community commercial to RM 2.5 on 3.098 acres, and site plan review on 3.098 acres, with staff report, and plan submitted on March, May 4, 2012.
Second.
We're gonna have to change that for plans that would be, you're approving the plans that are in the pack?
Ah.
You have to make for plans that whatever the stamp date is on the...
Stamp dated June 7th, June 7th, 2012. Correction, thank you.
Okay. Second on...
Second.
Having heard a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by nay.
Nay.
Nay. John and me are nay. All right.
Motion passed.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. You can continue on with your project.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Next, agenda item, planner's reports. Mr. Frans?
Well, we have a little bit of work to do on June 25th, as we continued a couple of projects at that meeting. We are gonna add one small rezoning of a rural piece of property to R1135. This is a house that's been there for years, and an area surrounded by R1135 zoning should be a conforming project. So I would say the June 25th meeting should go relatively quickly.
Good deal. Any members' reports?
Yeah.
Any continuing business? Any new business? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. All moved.
Second.
Having heard a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or, media's adjourned.